We're just waiting for Ed to come out. Sorry, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, June 5, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. Council President Flores, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Please stand for a moment of silence and then following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its people, a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, May 15, 2024, city council meeting and bills for payment on June 7 and 14. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
We have no presentations today, this morning, so we will start with if we have any repository sales. Do we have any repositories sales in the audience? Do we have any repository sales? I hear none, so we will be moving on to citizens to be heard. Can the media please sign, line up on your left of the room and citizens line up on the right, please sign. Laurie, are we still supposed to have a presentation?
No presentations. We have Mr. Richards signed up.
Okay, so Mr. Richards is going to speak for public comments. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All righty, yeah, so please state for the record your name and the municipality in which you live, and then you get five minutes to speak, and that goes for everybody when Citizens to be Heard starts. Thank you.
My name is Roger Richards, along with my wife Nedra, who's here. We live at 1928 South Shore Drive, two blocks from the Coquah Ravine Bridge. The Madam President and City Council members, thank you for agreeing to let me comment on this bridge matter. The Coquah Bridge has been under discussion for almost three years now, and a lot of people in the community in which I live have been working diligently to make it happen. If we don't take some, if you don't take some action today, my concern is that we're going to lose almost $3 million that has been proposed for this project from other sources than the city taxpayers. So we, I request that you seriously consider putting the bid package back on the table for first reading. I was concerned in the newspaper where I read what I thought were either misconceptions or previously unknown information when you debated your decision the last time, and for that reason, I have a couple of comments that I hope will update you on the, on the matter and that you will consider if you do agree to support putting the bids back on the package, on the, on the program for first reading. First of all, I'm not certain if you knew what the total budget deficit was. I heard comments that it was over $1 million. Actually, it's $675,000 and $571. So that is the nut that we have to crack to find money to cover the shortfall. Also, there were some suggestions that the, the package for the bridge was maybe too elaborate for the community. There were three proposals made to the public in the region where I live, and the cheapest one was chosen. I frankly wanted the most expensive one, but I was in the minority. I'm also pleased to tell you that a good friend of mine and neighbor has offered to cover the shortfall with a contribution to the city of $300,000. At this time, I think he wants to remain a private citizen, but I talked to him last night, and if you need more information on that, I'll be happy to share it with you. Within the last 24 hours, I've had conversations with council members and also with the city administration, and I've asked the city, which I believe they have been able to accomplish, to ask the Shivers Construction Company to extend the deadline on their bid package. It was supposed to expire on, I believe it was the 21st of June, and unfortunately, if, as I understand your procedure on first and second readings, we would not have been able to keep that bid in place. And if we didn't keep it in place, it means you'd have to re-bid the package, which puts us into next year's construction budget, and presumably that would cost more than the shortfall we have right now. Additionally, what that additional time permits us to do is meet with the Metropolitan Organizational Planning Committee at their June 26 meeting, where we will make a request for them to cover the other shortfall of $375,000. I have some acquaintance with members of that MPO, appeared before them in years past for projects on the Convention Center, and so I will be lobbying in favor of them covering that shortfall. Another thing that I think you should be aware of is a safety issue. Right now, all traffic, instead of going over the Coquah Ravine Bridge, goes down Maryland Avenue. Maryland Avenue has parking on both sides of the street, and St. Joseph's Home has a lot of elderly people walking their dogs and crossing the street in that area. I don't think, if you went there this morning, I came up there, that you could get a firetruck through there. So I think it's a safety issue also that we have the Coquah Bridge reopen so that the firehouse, which is right at the head of Sixtons and Coquah, has direct access to all homes west of Ravine Drive. I again ask for your support in, in a first reading for the bid packages that were previously presented so that we can queue this up for a later date with the extension that Shivers offered. And in conclusion, I'd hate to see the city and not, and the taxpayers lose almost $3 million that has been committed to this project from other sources. I guess I timed that just right. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or is that it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning, members of council. My name is Jay Shimick, and I live at 504 Lincoln Avenue. I've been down in that neighborhood since the 1960s, when my family's first, my family first moved there. So I've been using the Coquah Bridge, or had been using it till it was torn down, for more than 50 years. Cars, bikes, strollers, our dog, and the removal of that bridge has torn the fabric of that community, and there are more than 700 homes from Pittsburgh Avenue to Monica, from Sixth Street down to South Shore, and there are many other homes south of Sixth Street. Thousands of people live there. When the city was putting the project together, they, they surveyed a very small number of homes, maybe 200 or so, I can't remember the exact number, but there is a much broader community, and it, that, that bridge was there for 100 years, and it tied those two sides of Ravine Drive together. And for all of the reasons Attorney Richards had mentioned, as well as the replacement, simply, and that's what we're asking for, is the replacement of what was there. As Attorney Richards mentioned, people essentially expressed a desire for no frills because the bridge that was there was a no-frills bridge. If, if you didn't look off to the side, you didn't even know you were on a bridge. It was just a street, two sidewalks, and some chain link fencing. And so I would ask that you please reconsider the project. It's important to that community. It's one of the many communities that make up Erie, and it's a community that I've been part of for 50 years, and so I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ruth Swaney from 230 Lincoln Avenue, and I'd like to present a different aspect of this bridge. What brings me here is I received an email last week from Roger Richards that I found terribly misleading. It was, "Please do not respond to this email if you agree with my opinion," his opinion, "that the bridge should be constructed as a vehicular bridge." And I know most people do not respond to emails, and that would be in favor. I, from the beginning, have asked for a pedestrian-only bridge, and so that got me out in the neighborhood. I walked the neighborhood Monday evening and last evening from 5:30 to 7:00. Mostly, I asked the people who were walking, biking, using the streets, using the area, what they want, and I have a list here today of 52, 52 names of people that I encountered who are in favor of building a pedestrian-only bridge over Ravine Drive. There, I feel the neighborhood is much quieter, calmer, and safer for us people to walk, walk our dogs, walk the children, ride the bikes. We do want a bridge over Ravine Drive, and for me, a pedestrian-only bridge makes more sense than bringing back the traffic that's been gone for the last three years. And these people, neighbors, some of them, a few of them, a couple of them were, "Well, we don't live here, we just walk here all the time," and I said, "Well, are you a citizen of Erie?" They said, "Yes." I said, "Then you can sign it." One couple said, "No, we live in Mill Creek, but we'd like to sign it." I said, "Well, sorry, you can't sign it." But really, really, if you look at the names and the addresses, you will see that the majority of the people in my neighborhood, which encompasses Coquah Drive, I went as far east as I could in the short time that I had, want a pedestrian-only bridge, and I'd like to submit this into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
Good morning.
Good morning. Gary Johnson, 1950, South Shore Drive.
Thank you.
The reason the traffic is much better on Coquah is because it's impossible on Maryland, so I just want to say that. It has cut our neighborhood in half not having that bridge, but it's turning Maryland Drive into a major thoroughfare, and it's not equipped for that. There's only a sidewalk on one side of the street. Cathedral Prep owns a field that has no sidewalk. People are forced to walk in the street. Cars are parked on both sides. It's a very dangerous situation, as Attorney Richard said. The only other thing I'd like to say is that the situation right now is a total eyesore. It's concrete barriers, weeds, a sidewalk that goes nowhere, and we, the people in the neighborhood, I think, were not, we, we've been waiting patiently and for, to be told, "Well, you waited three years, we had all these meetings, we picked out the best bridge," which, as Attorney Richard said, was the cheapest bridge, and now to be told that, "Well, it's got to be a little too expensive." I think we really need to reconsider this, and I'm not sure that the young lady who spoke before me speaks for the neighborhood. She speaks for 52 people who signed a petition. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Barry Gray from 312 Madison Avenue, and I just wanted to express my support for my friend and neighbor Ruth in what she was saying. My wife and I went, have been to all the public meetings about the bridge, and when the community was surveyed originally about the three options, we voted for the pedestrian-only bridge. And when we saw the proposal for the vehicular bridge, I was really disappointed because it looks like something that would be going over I-90. It, it really isn't an attractive feature to add to our neighborhood. I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Rebecca Johnson, 1950, South Shore Drive.
Thank you.
I sort of agree with everything that Attorney Richards had said about the dangerous area, about the traffic on Maryland with parking on both sides, only a sidewalk on one side between bikers, moms with strollers, people falling into the parking lot behind St. Joseph's. All of that is an accident waiting to happen. I realize the dangerous bridge was very important because that was dangerous, but we created another dangerous area, and we, I think that's just an accident waiting to happen. The demolition of the bridge did bisect our neighborhood, and it looks terrible. It's, it's an eyesore, and it's just embarrassing. It's not taken care of by the city. It's, it needs to be addressed. I think that we all voted, I came to the meeting, we looked at the three proposals for three different bridges, and we all went with the cheapest because that's okay. I agree, it kind of looked like something that went over I-90. We just need something simple. A way to save some of the money is there's no need to have a barrier between the sidewalk and the street. There's, there's not a barrier on the Strong Vincent Bridge between the sidewalk and the, and the street. Most people walk in the street, and the sidewalk is there. I think that if we took down those barriers, that could cut a significant amount of, of cost from that building of the bridge. Two sidewalks and the street, and I agree that the traffic is less on that side because it's now going down a street that was never intended to have this much traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Garhart, I'm on top road, which is not right in the neighborhood, very close to the neighborhood, on the outskirts. I haven't been to any of these meetings before, but I just have a question for all of you. Have, how many, just if I may ask, for a raise of hands, how many have gone over and seen what we're talking about? You all have? Everyone? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. How many have seen? So therefore, you should know what we're talking about. Do any of you live over there? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pam Blakely. I live at 301 Shenley Drive. I did share some of my thoughts with Mr. Richards earlier, but if you do the math, you'll figure out how old I am. The first 24 years of my life, I lived in the 400 block of Lincoln Avenue. After getting married, my husband and I were gone for several years. We now have lived at 301 Shenley for over 40 years. The number of times that I have walked, biked, strollers, as other people have said, and have driven across it are too many to even think of. One thing that has bothered me is referencing this as the Frontier Bridge. I'm sorry, I grew up on Lincoln. It's not Frontier, and to people that live in Frontier, I'm sorry, but you know it. From Monica to Mohawk is Frontier. Anybody west of that, I'm sorry, you're not in Frontier. It mainly affects those people west of Mohawk all the way over. The people that live on, on Coquah, that live on Superior, live on Illinois, live on Maryland, that has always been our way. My husband worked downtown for years. His route home was always down Coquah, across the bridge, across and up Shenley to our house. It really has. I ride my bike every day, and it used to be I could cross the bridge, head over to the other South Shore. It blended the neighborhoods. Now I have to go up Maryland, which, as everyone said, it's a mess. I ride on the sidewalk in front of St. Joe's because of the traffic, and then I can go down, circle around, but I just think it's, it's a shame to not go forward with this because it really has torn our neighborhood apart, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Judy Allstart. I have lived in the neighborhood, I won't say how many years, but longer than most of you. I was born on Lincoln Avenue in the 1930s, and here I am, still running around. I taught at Harding School for over 25 years. I know the neighborhood like the back of my hand. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and I just wanted to say, I hope that we all do the right thing, all of us. Bridges are part of civilization. They bring people together. If any time in history we need to be brought together, it's now. There are many friendships in that neighborhood, and it brings together two sides of the neighborhood, the South Shore Drive. People like to walk from one end of South Shore to the other, and they like to run from one end of South Shore to the other. There are people out there walking and running from 5:00 in the morning. It's a very vital neighborhood. But the most important thing probably is safety, which Mr. Richards did bring out. We do need to have a fire department available in a safe, quickly, in a safe and quick manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Dominic Mizalko, City of Erie. I have an idea of what's going through your heads right now. Campaign contributions, a voting district, and your political aspirations. So let's talk about what's been said so far. When I started paying attention to what you've gotten from front of you, I called you on that exorbitant amount you paid for a set of blueprints. I've said this before. That's because your city engineer didn't do his homework when he sent out an RFI. The engineer had nothing to go on other than state specs. And like has been mentioned by a few people back here, you do have, sitting in front of you, interstate-capable bridge in a neighborhood that it's just going to dominate the heck out of that. And everybody in here knows it, you just don't want to admit it, that you've got too much bridge sitting in front of you for the purpose it has to serve. I've mentioned to two of you privately, you know, that a limited use, weight-restricted, properly-signed bridge, you know, pretty much similar to the culvert that it's replacing, would be financially better and suit everybody's needs. Now, it's been mentioned about wasted money. Some of that money is going to come from the city, out of my pocket, out of everybody else's in here. Some of that money is coming from the county, the vehicle registration tax. Now, it's just sitting in a bank. You're not just playing around with City of Erie money, you're playing around with county taxpayer money. And it might not be while Erie has more voters, or pardon me, excuse me, Erie has more residents, who has more registrations. So maybe the county's got a little bit more game in this than you think. Now, you're up here with a gentleman offering you $300,000 to spend $2 million, plus another three probably coming. I would say I wouldn't do anything until you got that other three. Other than that, you know, if you want to come out here and drop money in front of the city council, that smacks of, that smacks of payola. You know, I'll give you $300,000 if you go and drop $2 million of our taxpayer money, you know, in a bridge that nobody wants to admit, just drive around the block. You know, my neighborhood, two neighborhoods I've lived in have been impacted by city-changing traffic directions. And you know what you did? I got over it. You know, had to drive around the block, had to drive all the way around Canavino Field and the Zoo to get back to where I needed to be from the east side, instead of taking shortcuts that went through Glenwood. And that was a long time ago. Get over it. It's still not, it's still not the same. Now, it's been mentioned that if, you know, some people would like a different design, maybe a more cheaper, more reasonable, I'm not against that, but it's going to cost you more money to do that if you decide to go that way. So you know, you just don't want to admit it, that you've got too much sitting in front of you for the amount of money it needs to be spent. And if you're going to keep taking money right here on county council, or on city council floor, right in front of you, you might as well hang a for-sale sign around your neck, and I'm just going to have to come up there and take one of your seats. You have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynette Hughes. I live on Mohawk Drive. Previous to that, I was born and lived on Madison Avenue. And I've been a member of this hood for 70 years. I hate to admit it, but yeah, I've been riding my bike back and forth over South Shore, over the, over the bridge to South Shore for years. My parents lived on the other side of South Shore, so I visited them twice a day. My daughter lives on Maryland. My niece lives on Pittsburgh. So I go over there, I go over the bridge at least twice a day from where I am on Mohawk now. From the very beginning, this has been a nightmare. First of all, they wanted to redirect the traffic down and down into the ravine, which made no sense at all because the yacht club has trucks and all kinds of boats and all kinds of things going down that ravine. And they were, wanted to put a big truck, big trucks down the ravine, through people's neighborhood. Houses were on each side. That was the first fiasco. So now, here we are. It's, it's a nightmare, and it's dangerous where the signs are. It's just awful. We have a nice neighborhood. People clam to get, they want to get in this neighborhood. There's no room because everybody likes this neighborhood. And part of it was the Cockwa Bridge. And like I said, I go over there twice a day, but Maryland is a nightmare. Something's going to happen on Maryland. Now it's light, but if you're going over Maryland in the dark, which I usually do, from my daughter's house, you can't see anything. People don't park in their garages, they park on the street. People walk, they bike all over. But it's just, you know, it's just sad that after 70 years, I can't walk over to the other side of South Shore on that beautiful bridge that we had, and hopefully will have. And the last thing Mayor Schember said to us was, I will build you a bridge. So.
Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? I hear none, so Lori, we'll move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16437, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $181,599 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2024 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Member Brzezinski. The council file, Bill number 16437, and now known as official file ordinance 252024, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 252024 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16438, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $51,340 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to be used for stormwater improvements at Garrison Run. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Member Titus. That council file ordinance, Bill number 16438, and now known as official file ordinance 262024, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 262024 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16439, an ordinance amending Article 147, Section 1470111, to amend the definition of surviving spouse, 14701U, to add the definition of killed in line of duty, and Section 14706B, to define qualifying causes of death and disqualifying circumstances for killed in line of duty benefits. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Member Brzezinski. The council file ordinance, Bill number 16439, and now known as official file ordinance 272024, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Schaff, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 272024 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16440, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $250,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development for purchase of a fire truck. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Member Brzezinski. The council file ordinance, Bill number 16440, and now known as official file ordinance 282024, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 282024 by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16441, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from Dennis J. Hartwig and Life Services Management Corporation for the Police Department Central Operations Project. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That council file ordinance, number 16441, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council, ren and adopt, council file ordinance 16441 by yea seven nay zero on first Council file number 16442, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $300,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue, a donation to provide for the expenditure thereof for the Cockwa Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The council file ordinance, number 16442, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Just a lot of the public comments have already left, so, but we'll make, yeah, we'll make this efficient for you because there's a few more things on the agenda, and I think this might take a couple of days. Attorney Richards was correct, the administration was able to extend the contract. The contract was due June 21st, which put all of the pressure on Erie City Council to get rid of the paving. I mean, liquid fuels, you can look at our ordinances that were read and voted on in May. It's Council File 16434. You could see the difference of that from, and you could, this is back in May. So I see you putting on your glasses there. Hold up. So you could look at our ordinance, you could look at our agendas and minutes from May. There was two meetings. One of them, we voted on liquid fuel money for the Cockwa Bridge on first reading and paving, and the next meeting, you'll notice that it was just for paving. That's what we were voting on. I mean, this was a matter of $675,000 from the Liquid Fuels Fund. If you look back at our April meetings, you know, I realize all the surveys and stuff, you guys have a great history, but you could look back at our April meetings. We had two votes regarding the Cockwa Bridge back when we understood it to be fully funded. And those went real easy. It's just when we get to May, and it's no longer funded, and there's a huge gap. Now, the contract was due on June 21st. That puts all the pressure on Erie City Council to make the decision about that funding gap. That's our responsibility to figure out. The administration, buying extra time, and Attorney Richards, as he's presenting this $300,000 from a friend of his, leaves us a $375,000 gap that now MPO will have an opportunity to vote on on June 26th without us having to move forward blindly, without knowing where the funds are. So if anyone's expecting a conclusion to this today, we've heard you. I feel confident about where we stand with the community. I also understand there's a lot of, we do not pave enough roads in this town. I mean, it's, it is always on a shoestring budget. I expect that this will be resolved in our first meeting in July. Is my expectation without any, you know, once we know where all the funds are, I do not expect stuff moving forward. And this is just, you know, you'll see how these votes and tableings work and such in a moment. But I do not expect city council to be moving forward without knowing where the money is. And that's, I hope you can all understand that that's responsible. If we did move forward without knowing where the money was, I would hope you would vote us out of office. All right? But just to give a heads up, as most of the people are walking through now, but just to give you a heads up on what these upcoming votes are, with some explanation. Sorry, I didn't offer much discussion, but we talked about back in caucus. That's more for your understanding as these votes happen. All right?
Anyone else on council would like to discuss?
I think we were assured not only by Attorney Richards, but by Mayor Schember, that that MPO money was going to be here. If nothing is being held up other than personal agendas, we can go with it. I just think that we're making a lot of noise for no real reason. If we can't believe our mayor when he tells us that, it's almost a done deal. Who are we going to believe? That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just think that for the good of the order, as a council member, we're supposed to be fiscally responsible, and us questioning the money and where it's coming from is not bad on our end. We just want to make sure we can afford to pay for things, especially when we balance a budget that's pretty much already spent every year. So we're just trying to figure out where the money is to do the day-to-day needs of our city. So with that, hopefully, we can come to a conclusion in the coming weeks that everybody will be happy with. Go ahead, Lori.
Voting on the ordinance? Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. The council file ordinance, 16442, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus.
No.
Troop? Witherspoon?
No.
Flores?
No.
City council, ren and adopt, council file ordinance 16442 by yea four, nay three on first reading. This takes us to new business.
Do I have any council member to motion and second?
Motion to move the balance.
Thank you. Any separations? I do know we have some, so Lori, we have some.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to separate under contracts numbers three through five. Those can all be done together.
Anything else from anyone else on council? I'm hearing and seeing.
I'm hearing and seeing none.
No other separations. Voting on moving the balance of the agenda, members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. Resolution passes seven to zero. Under contracts, number three, sponsored by Councilmember Brazinski, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon, that the proper city officials be and are hereby authorized and directed to execute an engineering agreement between the City of Erie, Trans System Corporation, Doing Businesses, Trans System Corporation Consultants in Pittsburgh for the construction of the consultation services for the Coquah Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Discussion?
We can do three through four together, and if everybody's comfortable with the, that for efficiency. I don't remember what the motions I would need to make to do that.
Okay, the next one is authorizing and directing to execute an engineering agreement between the City of Erie and Urban Engineers, Inc. of Erie, PA, for the construction inspection services for the Coquah Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project for $120,000. And the third one is Shivers Construction Company in Fairview, the sum of $2,424,99230 for the bridge replacement project bid 1819-24.
Motion to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I was looking at Tyler, because I see him reaching for the mic.
And just for clarity, is that motion to the table until the July 3rd meeting?
I mean, I wasn't specifying, but I think that's what my, the understanding that I was implying. Any discussion?
Um, I will call for the vote. If no other council members are going to have a discussion, most people who have commented already spoke their piece, I feel as though, but it's open.
I think this just goes back to, um, what we were talking about earlier. Until, until we know where all the funding and stuff is going to come from, we can't move forward with, with the contracts.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion to table, Councilmembers Brazinski.
No.
Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
No.
Flores. Motion to table passes five to two. This moves us to committee reports.
Alrighty, we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Brazinski and move our way around.
Not a whole lot to talk about. The, uh, poor authority is, uh, very interested in the Coquah, uh, bridge project, because it's connected to everything down by the yacht club, the water lines, a whole bunch of things. Uh, I voted no on the table only because I put my faith in the fact that the MPO was going to come in anyway. So we will pass this bridge at the next meeting, I, I hope anyway. Uh, other than that, uh, have a nice summer. Bye.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaff?
Thank you, Madam President. I was not here at the last meeting in May because I was attending the Strong Towns Conference in Cincinnati, May 14th and May 15th, and it was an awesome and amazing experience for me, uh, to be with hundreds of people committed for vibrancy to make, uh, their towns the best that it can be. I'm totally offended by the remark that I'm here for political aspirations, as when I ran for council, I, uh, didn't ask any money, uh, from people or had any kind of financial, both the first time and the second time. Um, never had anything like that. It's just me. I'm here committed to the city, and, um, I consider it a part of a family. Um, I'm the oldest of five, and, um, my parents raised us well, and I just consider Erie an extended part of my family, and I'm just here to do the best that I can, um, in my heart. Um, I attended the police awards ceremony on May 22nd, and it was a privilege to be present to that ceremony. Um, the pinning of, um, the officers for the Purple Heart and the life-saving, and their work that they do, um, over and above the call of duty. Um, one officer jumped into the bay, um, to rescue a suicidal person, um, got the life-saving award. Um, yes, that's what they do, um, but, um, total privilege to witness that, and hopefully, um, we should have more awards like that, um, from the firefighters and the police officers, because it lets the people of the city know, um, that they are trying to do their best, and, um, every day that they wake up, their, um, life commitment is for the service. I attended a beautiful Memorial Day service at the Soldiers and Sailors Home with, um, my colleagues, um, Chuck Nelson and Tyler Titus, and, um, that was a, also, um, I am, uh, definitely, um, committed to attending those types of events, where, again, um, life-saving, uh, people who have died for our country. Um, there's no, um, it's just tear-jerking for me. Um, yesterday, I attended the fire pension meeting. Um, I'm going to council of government meeting this afternoon. I attended a Presque Isle Senior Art Show exhibit at Traditions on West 8th Street, and I thank them for doing that, um, for the last several years. Um, the seniors of our community, um, really do some beautiful artwork. Um, I spent four days at the Rip Fest in Perry Square, not that I hung out there 24/7, but, um, went down there and, um, ate and listened to music and talked to people. I attended the Open House Community of Caring Food Pantry, which is at 261 East 21st Street, and they have, uh, an awesome pantry set up where the people choose. When you go to food pantry, sometimes you're just given a bag of food, and you have to deal with what you have. But they have a food pantry where you get to pick, and they also have, um, it according to your dietary, um, like if you had diabetes or something like that, they have, um, special food there for you. Um, I attended the Downtown Partnership, um, annual awards meeting at 1020 Collective, and, um, they have, uh, new things going on. Um, they have brought in the Smith Group, and I talked with them about, um, wanting a public restroom for our downtown area. Their, um, Downtown Partnership, um, wants to grow and expand as much as possible to, uh, bring cleanliness, safetiness, and good times and activities into, uh, our downtown area, and, um, going to go see Barbie with President Flores.
June 17th.
June 17th.
In Perry Square.
So, um, then I, uh, even though...
You gotta work pink for that, you know?
Went to the, um, diversity equity, um, 25 Erie area small businesses were awarded $5,000 to $20,000, for a total of $291,500 for, um, their diverse Erie small business. And, um, even though that's not a city function, it is, um, their businesses are in our Erie community, and anything that helps prosper our Erie community is fine with me. I attended, uh, the Troika Festival Friday evening with a friend and had delicious fish sandwiches, and talked to a lot of people there. Uh, and that's what I love to do, is, um, meeting people, talking, and, um, strengthening relationships. That's, um, you know, we all have our gifts. And mine is social, I guess. Um, I attended a Toons for Tots meeting that will be held July 21st, and, um, with my son-in-law, um, and my grandson, being Marines, um, past and present, I am definitely for that. I attended a special meeting with, um, Chuck Nelson, with Jackie Spry, for the 12th Street reimagining. I went to the Erie Ale Works benevolence beers for the Downtown Partnership, even though you won't find me drinking. Um, I am anything for, uh, providing, um, money for good sources. And attended the Bayfront Car Show on Monday, which is also, um, their 50/50 is given to the veterans, and, um, I'm going to be, um, talking, um, more about how we need to reduce the speed in our city. I was walking along West 2nd Street yesterday, um, for quite a while, and it was in the evening. Um, great to see Bayview Park, uh, people were playing basketball, the fountain, uh, or the splash pad was going on, people were playing baseball, people were gathering at the pavilion. That is a very wonderful and active park, but we definitely need to slow down the people who drive not just along West 2nd Street, but every single street in our city. And I hope people stay active, um, by attending, um, all the different things going on this summer, because it's definitely going to be a great summer if we follow our safety rules. And you have to remember that. It's so, so important. It's not just your life, but it's the lives of our community that you put in jeopardy when you are not following safety procedures. So be aware on your bicycle, be aware while driving, and any other type of activity that you're doing outside of your home. Um, I have more to say, but I'll just stop at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate all the work you do.
I, I appreciate that you, like, point out when I go to those meetings with you, because that saves me some time on my report. She left a couple of the things she did off of that list. On, uh, May 20th, she was at the Ways and Means Committee, and then later went to the JFK Center. You missed those. That was since last meeting. Good job.
Go ahead, Chuck. Now your report.
I was at the Ways and Means Committee with, uh, with Jackie on, or, I'm, sorry, I have, the next note on here is the one we had with Jackie. Um, I had a meeting with the county regarding homelessness, um, and Mayor Schember was there as well. Um, I get to wear multiple hats with there. We also, in regards to the issue of homelessness downtown, the Upper Room just hired a new executive director, so I'm excited with some of the progress we may see there. On May 20th, I went to the Steamfitters Training, um, Facility with, uh, County Councilman Rock Copeland to see some opportunities that we have within the labor and training. Uh, got back that evening, uh, for the Ways and Means Committee, uh, which was quite a privilege, I think, for so many congressmen to be in Erie. And, uh, you know, the city was represented by, uh, Kathy and I, uh, Councilman Schaff and I, and, um, you know, but now we can see it was a bit of a, uh, you know, now we see the, the ads being promoted. So, uh, is, is, is a bit more political than I realized it was going to be, but those opportunity zones, when you look at where the investment's happening in Erie right now, those have been really significant. I mean, almost, most of the investment we've seen have been directly in those. Um, as Kathy had mentioned, 12th Street subdivision, um, Planning Subcommittee meeting with, uh, our Director of Planner, uh, Director of Planning, Jackie Spry. Um, the next day, there was an Airport Authority meeting. Uh, they just recently got through their audit, and I'll tell you, one of the things that I was really impressed with was that the, um, and they, and they reported on, uh, a lunch that they did at Jefferson that was, uh, in a good report. Um, I'll say from the audit, uh, our last two appointments to that authority, I think, uh, I'm, I'm pretty excited. They were, they were definitely the two that I think brought the most questions and, uh, brought the most clarity. Um, there's a lot of strong people on that, um, authority, but we've seen a few of them change in the last couple of years, and, uh, I, I thought some real strong presence. Um, I don't remember what that means. Um, sorry, my notes. Uh, oh, Erie Downtown Partnership, uh, they had their, um, their meeting. Um, so I have one note here for EDP, and the next one's for EPD. So that was, uh, I was wondering if I wrote it twice. Uh, I was at the police awards, uh, until leaving for the Airport Authority meeting, uh, Soldiers and Sailors, as she'd said. The, um, yeah, those, those are the big ones to report back on.
Thank you. I appreciate your report.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
I'm following up, uh, two very good speakers, so I'll try to be brief. I got a pastor over there and a socializer.
It is always hard to come up after them, right?
Yeah. Um, encouraging folks to, uh, check out the Downtown Partnership website or Facebook page. Also, the City of Erie, um, a lot of summer events, big schedule events for people, for families, with the goal of trying to bring the community together and provide engagement. I'm happy that the weather was good for the Rip Fest. Sometimes the weather is bad for that, so, um, dedicated chance to check that out. Uh, congrats to the organizers. Also, on May 20th, um, we did visit the JFK Center. Um, Ms. Schaff was there with us. Also, Principal Don Orlando from Erie High School was there. He's the principal there. He came out. Um, we were able to connect with one of the workers that worked in the program. He works at Erie Insurance, and we found out about a apprentice program they have, uh, where they take high school students in, and they take them to an apprentice program, and if they work out, they will hire them for a job. So that's something that they are seeking. If you have parents, if they have a student high school, that, that they feel like would qualify for the program, that's something to look into. Also, um, you know, I work in school, this will be year 27, uh, just completed. Um, and last day of school was yesterday for students. So, um, as an administrator, I do go to school all summer. Most people ask me that. I don't get it, get the time off, and just encouraging the community, be careful. We know there's more kids out there now. Um, also, congratulations to everybody who works in schools all year long. I don't think most people realize what it really is to work in a school. They have a view from the outside, but it usually changes after about a year if you work there. You understand the reality of it. Um, also, uh, parents, if, if you have students that you know are behind on credits and are high school students, I would encourage them to get them into summer school, because high school, you gotta pass the classes. You have to pass to get the credit. So, um, we don't want them to get to their senior year and, or what should be their senior year, and they find out they don't have the credits to graduate. So that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
Thank you. Uh, starting with the parking authority, their next board meeting is going to be next week. They're continuing to roll out updates and do a lot of, um, you know, just projects around the city within, within the garages, and also with, with the meters. There's several signs now that were missing before, just, um, on State Street that are now in. As they've done the update there, there'll be more that'll be heading up, uh, more on north of State Street that will be in. And so, reminding people that you have to have the app if you're going to be parking downtown. There are a few kiosks, probably not going to get more kiosks just because their cost, they really are cost prohibitive, but then looking to, to see where you can park. Um, the, the, the next board meeting for EMTA is going to be on my birthday. Um, I don't think they did that on... I don't think they did it on purpose, but I'm sad, but that's okay. It's 6:24, so that anybody can join, you're going to join via Zoom. You just have to send an email to, to register prior to going. So 6:24 is the next EMTA board meeting. The Human Relations Commission is currently on hold right now. I'm not really sure what is happening here. It's really up to county council to kind of decide how they're going to move forward. So I'll provide some updates once we have updates. Was at the Erie Zoo on the 28th of, of May, doing a tour with the board. Got to see a lot of the updates that they have going on behind the scenes. There was a lot of private donors who have come in to make it more accessible. New boardwalks that have been added through. It really is just, it, it's a great public asset. There are a lot of projects they have underway. Public Works is working directly with a few around zoning. The last spot that we had kind of left that conversation off was Public Works is going to go back out there and talk about a couple of other projects that would have to shift some layouts, but I'll follow back up with that. On six, three, so yesterday, I met with Tina Manjean from the Erie County Redevelopment Authority and went over the projects that they're working on more in depth. There's some phenomenal things that are happening. There are things that we don't have all the funding for yet and there's enormous lifts being done. So I know the city has been a, a great partner and I would just lean into them to say, to please continue to do what you have been doing. Makes I think great things are happening with that, that partnership there. Last week, we had the, we met with, it was me and President Flores, met with Chris Groner and Renee Lamas to discuss LERTA and a little bit more in detail. LERTA stands for the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Program. There's going to be a lot more coming up, but I just really want the public to understand what it is and what it isn't. And so we need to kind of lean into, to this as, as we'll be talking about this as council quite a bit in, in the next like month and a half. And you're going to see the school board talking about this, you're going to see county council talking about this. And it's important that we understand as the, the LERTA that we have right now is getting ready to sunset. And we need all three taxing bodies to be moving in the same direction for, for it to work. And so if there are questions, if there's, there's public comment, we're going to have a, a study coming up that will be open for people. I, I encourage you to come in to ask questions so that we understand when we as a council are moving forward, really where, how we fall and why we're falling in those directions. Councilmember Schoff had mentioned that we were able to attend the memorial service on 5/26. It was Colonel Jeremy Acriss, United States Army Retired Veteran, who, who really highlighted the impact of, of war, not just on, on the soldiers themselves, but those who care for the soldiers, the lives lost, those who are still missing and those who are held captive. And as, as a child of a, of a Marine, it personally hit home. June is Pride Month, which really, to understand Pride Month, we're talking about visibility and representation, commemoration and reflection. So this is a time to remember the struggles that the community faces, the accomplishments that we've made and the things that we're still fighting for. Many don't know that in the state of Pennsylvania, we still do not have any legal protections for those who, who fall outside the, the norm of, of straight or cisgender. We are, we are allowed to get married, but then we could show up the next day at work and be fired and that's still legal. So we are, we are fighting for, for representation and we are fighting for equal protect, excuse me, equal protections. This year is an election year, in case nobody noticed, it's about to ramp up. I think the tensions are high. I was in Allentown over the past weekend with the Democratic State Committee and it was very apparent with the amount of protests that we endured while we were down there, what we're about to face. And so I think as we look at that, as we look at the summer, where, where we just see more students who are out, we see the tensions are high because families are struggling to keep roofs over their heads. We're seeing an increase in overdoses that we really have to call on, you know, the services within the city, the county and the private investors to support the organizations who are providing the services and resources and to, to be prepared that this is, this is not going to be an easy summer and it's not going to be an easy fall as we move into that. And then finally, I'll wrap it up with this. Congratulations to all this year's graduates. These are huge accomplishments, many who are going out to start the next, next chapter of their lives. And a special shout out to the first graduating class of the Erie Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Go ahead, Councilmember Witherspoon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Police Chief who provided us with a detailed report of the activities of the Erie Police Department. They have been very, very active and I'll just give you a few. May 23rd fatal accident number six, the most we had in quite a while. East Fifth and Wayne Street, a 42-year-old rolled his car over, was thrown out and was caught underneath the car and of course he passed. May 23rd, it was a car chase for a traffic offense. And when they stopped the individual, they found drugs in the car and that individual was charged. May 22nd, there was a burglary, 800 Block, East Avenue at Metro PCS. Suspect stole phones and was arrested a few blocks later and charged, 17-year-old. On May 25th, shooting victim. It was number six for us. He accidentally shot himself while cleaning his gun. So for those of you who have guns unloaded, please.
Before you clean it.
May 25th, possible burglary at the bait shop on East Avenue. Police was called, the door was open, but no report thus far on that. Another burglary, stop and go, 900 East Avenue. For the third time, unfortunately, three juveniles. It's currently under investigation. The Rib Fest went off without a hitch as far as EPD is concerned. They did a fine job. They were very present as they move around during the Rib Fest. EPD worked very closely with Secret Service when Joe Biden was in town. They did an outstanding job there as well. The entire report that I received from the Police Chief, I'll leave with the city clerk and any citizen could come and peruse it at your leisure. Next, I'd like to bring up a very dear subject. I know everyone is waiting for it. Biddy basketball. That's my five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. Biddy basketball camp will begin June 24th and June 28th on a Friday with the award ceremony. I'm pleased to announce that Paige Collin has been appointed Director of the Biddy Camp. She's been with us for, oh, maybe five years. And I decided to make her the Director and she's putting all that together. She'll do a great job. Also, another lady is administrative, I call her Chief Administrator. Her name is Erica Rakowski. She does the IT work for the league and she's more than part-time. She knows what you're doing and I appreciate her. I usually limit biddy basketball participants to 40 kids. This year, we had 55 registrations and anybody know me, I've got a soft heart, so we're going to make 55 work this year. I just couldn't turn those kids down. The Basketball League itself, currently we have 142 players registered. Nine to 10 age group, we have 22. 11 to 12, we have 33. 13 to 14, we have 45. 15 to 16, we have 42. That number will probably increase, but because of some reason, the first day we ready to play, another 20 has showed up. I forgot, Mr. Spoon, I forgot to register. But we'll make a way or if I can't, we'll put them to work picking up trash. Sadly enough, Bayview Park. Each year, we have difficulty finding players. Right now, there are only nine players that have registered. Next week, we plan to do onsite registration. We'll put it on the WERG. I'll give it to Mike Ruzi. I'll give it to the city. We want to get those kids there. It's always been slow, but we, we usually have enough at least for the 11, 12, 13, 14 age group. And it's important that we move quickly because it takes anywhere between 20, 28 days for them to order the shirts and then print the shirts. But if I get the kids and the shirts are not in, I will let them play until the shirts Finally, I visit the project that the Eagle Nest is building, the Rec Center. The walls are now going up. It looks good. Something's finally happening there, but they're going to need some additional help from the city. And that's going to be Bishop Brock's call to contact the city and see if there's some additional help available. But it's an outstanding project and I know it helps me because if it rains when we do biddy ball, we'll have a gym to go into. And so I'm a little special on that one. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. I'll go with my report on May 21st. I attended the 12th Street Reimagine Public Meeting at John Vincent Middle School at 6:00 PM. It's always nice to go to those meetings because you get the real community input that they're feeding to these projects and it was a nice turnout. I fell as though, considering it was at 6:00 PM. Next, I did attend Rib Fest on the 29th, opening Wednesday with Councilmember Schoff just to see the vendors and what was going to be going out. And then I attended the following day on the 30th, just me socially enjoying dinner. And on, what, last week, I had the meeting about LERTA with Renee and Chris Groner and then Tyler Titus as well. We were just getting updates that'll be coming in the coming weeks so that we're not completely in the unknown. On Saturday, June 1st, I was the keynote speaker for the Erie High Royals graduation. So, and again, congratulations to the class of 2024 for the Erie High Public Schools, but also the Collegiate Academy had their graduation and all the graduates who have graduated this year. It's great that we had our first class for the community college. It was intra, well, second, but we had Jill Biden, Jill Biden come and speak, but it was just nice to see how many people were up there on stage celebrating the students. I remember when I was an activist, it was not as many supporters for the community college. So it was just nice to see a lot of people who were against it up there taking pictures and on stage. And I always say that's telling to what's currently in favor of things. But anyways, I always love seeing that. It's always interesting, turn of events. But all the graduates are well celebrated. And then on, we had the announcement that the Erie Downtown Partnership did their public announcement for all the Monday movie lineup that'll be happening in Perry Square. The first one is going to be June 17th and it's going to be the Barbie meeting, Barbie movie, which I do plan on attending. And from the sounds of it, Councilmember Schoff will be there as well, so we'll probably be there together. On Thursday, which is tomorrow, the mayor will be announcing our summer concert series, which I do hope to tune in at 10:00 AM to see what's going on because I look forward to that. It's always nice to be able to have things to look forward to at the end of your week and those happen on the weekend. And then I wanted to comment on Councilmember mentioning to reduce speed. Everyone is enjoying summer. Everyone is trying to have a good time. We need to make sure that as vehicles, we're giving ourselves enough time and we're not speeding through neighborhoods. People are enjoying their summer, kids are playing. I don't want to continue to see the tragedy that is happening during the summer that is preventable because then that gives a bad taste to that family during these months. And if it's preventable, then let's do our part to make sure that our city is staying safe and we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're following those speeds and stopping at stop signs and stopping at the red lights and not just shooting through them because I see it all the time and it's scary. So, you know, reduce the speed, save a life and slow down is pretty much what I would like to see. And then I just wanted to comment that our next council meeting, which will be held on June 12th at 6:30, will be at the Booker T. Isn't it 19th? Okay, yeah. I'm too far in advance. So the 19th at 6:30 at the Booker T. And that is going to be the first of a three-part series of us going on a summer tour. So we're going to see how this goes and if it's a success for the community to reach us better than coming to City Hall, then maybe we could open it up to additional places because Councilmember Brzezinski has mentioned that we should probably reach out to some of the retirement homes, assistant living homes or something of that nature, right? They have community centers in each one of those buildings. All right, yeah. So things could be happening in the future, but that is all I honestly have to report and I will yield my time to Ms. Controller. Teresa, do you have a report? None? All righty. So listeners, do we have a report? No, none? Okay. And Renee, do we have a report from the administration?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I wanted to thank the residents who came today to share their feedback. I think, you know, it's important for all of our residents to stay involved and stay engaged in the things that we are, we are doing here because it's all to serve the residents. And I know it's been a long process. It's been over three years now and unfortunately, these things take time. When you're looking at a project of this magnitude, we appreciate their patience as we work to complete the project, but as always, we appreciate their input. We, as has been mentioned, will be considering LERTA and so we will be having a study session on Thursday, June 13th at 6:00 PM to kind of share our, kind of our data analysis of the last five years and, and what's occurred and what's on the horizon. We also, as, as President Flores mentioned, at tomorrow's 10:00 AM press conference, we will be announcing the schedule for Lights Over Lake Erie, the 814 Concert Series and Sounds of Summer. And as in previous years, the 814 Concert Series and Sounds of Summer will take care, take place on Sundays and Mondays in between Lights Over Lake Erie and Celebrate Erie, with Celebrate Erie being the culmination, August 16th through the 18th. So tomorrow, we'll be sharing more details, details on that. I also wanted to mention that EMTA is hosting their third annual 14th Fest on June 14th, which is on 14th Street between French and Holland. They will be having food trucks, breweries, children's activities, live music. It's all free admission from 5:00 to 10:00 PM on June 14th. And then finally, we finally have the RFP for the Comprehensive Citywide Parks and Rec Plan that's received the go-ahead from DCNR. That was a grant that we received a couple of years ago and so that is out now. Hopefully, we will be interviewing consultants soon and we'll be able to get that project underway. And that will be another instance in which we will be seeking a lot of community feedback and input regarding their priorities for city-owned parks and public spaces. So, thank you.
Thank you. And with that?
No. I'm sorry. I remembered what I wanted to say. I'm so sorry, President. So Renee mentioned that, so Friday, June 14th, the City of Erie is absolutely going to be rocking downtown because not only is it the EMTA, which I'm going to be there, but there's, it's also gallery night and it's also the car show event where people park their cars from 13- park their cars from 13th Street to Third Street, and it's also probably a dance performance at the Warner Theater. So Friday night, June 14th, be here to energize yourself from the State Street all the way up to 14th Street. Let's pray for great weather.
Great weather. All righty, and I believe with that, that concludes our city council meeting. Thank you.
City Council adjourns at 10:25.